What are we doing? Mine doesn't look like that.
Okay, you ready, Michelle?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It's approximately 6:37. This is the Westminster City Council and Westminster Economic Development Meetings for July the 13th. At this point, I would ask the city clerk to take the role.
Chairperson Atchison.
Here.
Board member Demott.
Here.
Vice chairperson Sights.
Here.
Board member Seymour. Board member Scully.
Here.
Board member Smith. President. And board member Vols.
Here.
Here.
Okay. At this time, we've had a request to enter into an executive session as the Westminster Economic Development Authority. Mr. Frankel, would you lead the session title, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The executive session for WEDA that's proposed is to discuss strategy and progress on negotiations related to a proposed first amendment to the For Sale Development Agreement with Thrash Group LLC, doing business as Downtown Residences LLC, for a portion of Block A1, a portion of Block A4, and Block C7 in downtown Westminster, and to provide direction to the authority's negotiators as authorized by Westminster Municipal Code 1113C2 and 7, as well as Colorado Revised Statute 246402 for A and E1.
At this time, I will pull the council, the board, to make sure that everyone is prepared to go into executive session, and we will explain further the details of executive session once we're there. Mr. Demott.
Yes.
Ms. Sights.
Yes.
Ms. Scully.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Vols.
Yes.
And for the record, a note that board member Seymour is not available tonight. At this point, I will ask all of the board members to remove themselves from the current link, turn off this web link meeting, and then rejoin under the link that was provided to you for the executive session.
I'm the one that's from an email from Michelle for pre-WEDA executive session.
Okay. Okay.
Anyone we have on the call waiting for the meeting to start, we have just finished an executive session under the Weetab board meeting. I apologize for the delay. This took a few minutes longer than we had anticipated. As soon as we get everybody off of that and can get them re-logged in, we'll be back here to start the Westminster City Council meeting. I'm sorry, the next station of the Weetab board meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I believe we have all of the members of the board have rejoined us in the webinar.
Okay, good enough. All right, members of the authority, this is the, again, a continuation of the meeting of the Weetab board. We have already considered our roll call. At this time, I will open up the floor for the exceptions of the minutes of the meeting of July the 6th. Mr. Demott, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I moved to the Westminster Economic Development Authority approved the minutes of the July 6, 2020 as presented.
Smith here for a second.
Yes, sir. I second.
I have a motion and a second for the board to accept the minutes as provided from the July 6 meeting. All those in favor, if you would signify by aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is the adoption of Resolution 209, Ms. Seitz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution 209, authorizing the Executive Director of the Westminster Economic Development Authority to execute a First Amendment to the For Sale Development Agreement with Downtown Westminster Residences LLC in substantially the same form as presented for the development of condominiums on a portion of Lot 2, Block A1 in downtown Westminster.
Volz.
A second, the motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is any discussion by any member of the authority? Seitz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I plan on voting in support of this, or I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I plan on voting in support of this measure. I believe in the, the sound investment in our downtown. I believe in the strength of our downtown and so, you know, particularly understanding the, with the changes in the COVID has, has brought, wanting to allow for a little certainty to do some of those pre-sales. Currently, I have friends that are looking to move to Westminster and they have lost at least three homes in bidding wars. So I do know we have a strong desirable community. I'm confident in the strength of the pre-sales and I look forward to seeing this development be an important and integral piece, the for-sale portion of our downtown. I will be voting yes.
Mr. Demott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Initially, when this came before us, I voted against this because I thought it was too good of a deal for really the hot market that we were seeing. I am not as confident in the market right now and being that, you know, there are certain things that should happen in a certain timeline in the, what we're trying to accomplish with the downtown. I really do want to see this succeed because I do think for, even when I voted no against this, I think I shared that, I think that for sale, for purchase condos and townhomes are a piece of this pie that really need to be there to be successful. So considering the onset of what we've seen with COVID and its potential to really devastate, you know, our markets across the board, I am going to be changing my vote and supporting this tonight because I think we're in a much different situation than we were in when this was before the board prior.
Mr. Volz.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also am very pleased to have a chance to vote for this tonight. I think this is a great step forward for our new downtown. We do need that owner-occupied residential marketplace there, that piece of the market. So I'm glad to support this tonight. The one question I would have is the 180 days, how do we achieve, I guess this is for staff, just a question. How do we achieve or how do we come to, is that just standard in the market or is that something that's kind of a particular bank issue? Or how do we come up with 180 days as the exclusivity time period? Thank you.
Mr. Hall, can you answer the question, please?
I certainly can. But this is John Hall, Economic Development Director with the city. Board Member Volz, we negotiated to a date that we could both agree upon. As you might imagine, staff was anxious to see development occur as soon as possible. The developer would have probably liked a little bit more time, but we both agreed that six months was something we could live with mutually and that would assure the success of the project.
Thank you for that answer and that's understandable considering the circumstances we're in right now. And thank you to staff for negotiating that and I look forward to voting yes on this. Thank you.
Ms. Scully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too will be voting in favor of this investment in our new downtown. I appreciate the variety of housing that we're considering for the downtown. That has been a, a want of our residents asking us to consider a variety of types of housing and I think this meets that, that outcry. And I appreciate that we're investing in our downtown. This is an important project, bringing our city even more prosperity. So I appreciate all the work that the staff has put into this. Thank you for your hard work and your dedication. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In my original vote, when this first came to cancel, it was a no. I didn't agree with how the, the setup of the sale agreement was designed. Establishing rebates and selling our property at a very reduced rate. And so my original, my original thought was no. But I understand the value and the strength and resiliency that our downtown needs to have, especially in this, this day and age with COVID. And so this is something that we need to look at. It's in its entirety right at this point. And I, I think I could get on board with, in the long term, having this be an investment. So I will be in support of this tonight. Thank you.
Just for the record, the deal that we're talking about is in some extensions of time. It does not change the financial deal. We still have the same financial pieces put together, but as a number of the board members have alluded to, we've had a lot of impacts here in Colorado because of the COVID-19 impacts. And getting closings done, getting construction people going, getting staff to work these projects and also slowdown in some cases by the banks and getting closing dollars done. And I believe that what the builder and developer is proposing, which has been reviewed and recommended by staff, keeps the integrity of the deal together, but it also helps them with some questions that financial institutes are talking about in regard to pre-sales. I also will be supporting it. Are there any other comments by any member of the authority? Hearing and seeing no other ones being asked, Ms. Parker, this is a roll call vote, please.
Chairperson Atchison.
Yes.
Atchison votes yes. Board Member Demott.
Yes.
Demott votes yes. Vice Chair Sights.
Yeah.
Sights votes yes. Board Member Scully.
Yes.
Scully votes yes. Board Member Smith.
Yes.
Smith votes yes and Board Member Volz.
Yes.
Thank you, Board. Therefore, the motion passes on a 6-0 vote. Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes the business of the Westminster Economic Development Authority. We will pause for just a couple of seconds to give people time to move around and then we'll reconvene as quickly as possible as the Westminster City Council. For the purpose of the record, the roll call that was done previously will still stand. First item on the agenda that we have tonight is for consideration of the meeting minutes. Mr. Volz, excuse me. Mr. Demott.
Thank you, Mayor. I move the city council approve the minutes of the June 22nd, 2020 meeting as presented.
Mr. Volz.
A second, the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion to approve the minutes of the June 22nd meeting, please signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is carried. There are no presentations scheduled for tonight. Ms. Parker, I believe that we have some public comments that were provided.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did receive some written public comments in advance of the meeting. Those written public comments were published and attached to the full agenda packet last Wednesday and are of course available online for anyone who wishes to review them. We also today received a voicemail for testimony which we will play for you at this time.
Mr. Mayor, councilors, Mr. Tripp and Chief Carlson. My name is Rich Chamberlain and I've been a resident at 8916 Nesta Street for about 35 years. I'm speaking to you tonight to introduce a letter from the Spiritual Assembly of the Bahis of Westminster, dated June 28th and submitted to you last week concerning your statement regarding safety, equity and unity in our community. First of all, the local spiritual assembly is a council of nine men and women elected by the members of the Baha'i faith here in Westminster. And like similar institutions throughout our nation and world, we and our community are working neighborhood by neighborhood to build a more just, peaceful, unified world firmly rooted in a set of spiritual principles that includes the recognition of the oneness of humanity and the reality that all faiths derive their inspiration from one God. We all suffer together from the crises that seem to be crashing on us in waves right now. And we recognize that those of us who are most vulnerable in the best of times suffer the most when the worst comes. It behooves those of us blessed with power, privilege and resources to reflect deeply on these disparities and how best to build a community where all benefit from the fruits of even-handed justice, prosperity and equality under the law. We submit this letter with respect, hope and prayers for you and the community you serve and that we love. Thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Mayor, that is the end of the voicemails that we received for public comment and we received no other comments.
Okay, thank you very much. Move on to the next item, report of city officials. Mr. Tripp.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any comments. I will under the COVID report later on, but not right now. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Moving on to council, are there other comments? Mr. Demott.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to quickly comment on a few things. First, I wanted to start with my report of the inclusivity board that I am the liaison to. I was not able to attend the meeting. However, I did watch the meeting in its entirety since it was recorded. And I just wanted to share some of the, the good work that I feel was done in that meeting. Our chief of police as well as his deputy chiefs joined him to talk to our inclusivity board about the recent unrest and different things going on in the law enforcement community and the nation at large as far as racial equality. I think it was a very productive meeting, very good dialogue between both sides of the conversation. They talked a lot about, you know, what the mix of our police department versus our population is. And I was pleased to hear that we have a pretty close mix as far as what different races or nationalities that we have in our police department versus in our populace. I'm hoping at some point, and this is more of a thing for the staff, that I could hear what those same calculations are between the rest of our staff in the city, between our fire department and our normal city staff. I think that would be an interesting thing for the city council to know in those same kind of inclusive type guidelines. So that was one thing I wanted to share. The other thing I wanted to share are, and this is really just a question that I haven't got answered yet. So I wanted to ask it on the record since we don't have our pre-meeting comments. I know there was a piece that was done as far as a, a letter of support that we put out for the police department that was within the guidelines of what the law and what the law of 217 that was recently passed that the state legislator asks for. And it seems like there was a, a piece in a news article or online periodical or something that misquoted exactly what the city did. And I know that we've since cleared it up. But I'm just curious where that communication got dropped. I've seen the follow-up article from that same organization today that states that we walked back our position. And I do not believe we walked back our position. I believe our position is the same as it was and it was always within compliance of the law. So I wanted to at least mention that and hopefully we can get some more learning how next time we can avoid miscommunications. Thank you.
Mr. Tripp, you have any comment you'd like to make in regards to that before we move on? If not, I do.
Oh, sir.
I, let me follow up with, the media that Mr. Demott is talking about was given very clear information, not only from our city attorney's office, but also from the attorney general's office. And the fact that they did not publish what they were told, we have no control over. And I truly expect you are absolutely correct. We did not change our position. The Attorney General's Office reviewed our position and still says that we are in full compliance with 217 and there is nothing that they should have interpreted otherwise. Ms. Scully.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to report on the meeting that I attended last week. So last week I attended the Parks Recreation Library as an open space meeting. It was last, I think it was last Thursday and we were, we were given a virtual tour of the Metzger Farm and also reviewed a survey from the city with the, the board. And we also did, talked about the Nature Place Center going in at the TOD in Historic Westminster. Also talked about the Big Dry Creek Corridor Sewer, changes and how that's going to affect things in the parks. And then talked about some of the other projects that are on the near future for our Parks and Recreation Department. I just want to iterate that I'm always very inspired by this group, their diligence, their work. They're very loyal to what they're doing and always thinking about how we can improve our parks and our open space. And I, I think that I've, recall from our survey and, and know that when I was out, when I've been knocking doors and as somebody who's lived in Westminster for 28 years, we all really value that part of our city greatly. It's why many of us chose this area to live in and are frequent users of our parks, recs and open space and libraries. Especially during this time of COVID, we're really recognizing how important this space is to us. And so, you know, really talking about as a city, how do we continue to grow our open space and our parks? And how do we continue to offer resources and opportunities for our residents to utilize those, those great opportunities that we have in our city. So thank you to that board and for their service and their dedication. And that ends my report.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Volz.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, sorry about that. Took a minute. I also want to follow up on what Counselor Demott mentioned just a moment ago. There was a very, the article from the Colorado Public Radio about Westminster and, and mentioned us was troubling in a few different ways. And I'm glad that our city attorney and others and that within the organization, our communications manager tried to correct the record as best we could and I appreciate that very much. I think I would like some kind of a brief report. How do we handle these situations? I, I think Counselor Demott did raise an issue here that is important. There was a section in that article and I had a number of our residents bring it to my attention that said, one department, the police department referred it to the city, the city referred it back to the police and they never did get. So if that's true, that's troubling. It may not be true and I'd like to know that. So I would like to request some kind of, just a brief report on that at some point in the future. How are we handling those kind of issues? Because I personally did get pulled in and spent quite a bit of time on that. So I would like to know how we're handling those. Thank you. And then finally, just, I want to say on another note, I'm very, very proud of our city, proud of the city council. We passed a facial covering mandate quite a while back, May 11th. So we were ahead of the curve. We were one of the first cities kind of set the, the wheels in motion. We were the first cities in the front range to do such. And now everyone follows, most cities that follow suit and it's one of the great tools we have and one of the few tools we have to combat coronavirus. If we took that step, we knew we would get pushback and we did. We had a lot of pushback for, for a time. But now it's pretty much universally accepted as one of the, the better tools to combat this COVID-19. So I, I just want to say I'm proud of our city and our staff and this council for making that action and doing it early, much earlier than most of our neighbors. And we kind of took some heat at that at first, but I, I was really glad we did it. I think we also all reminded everyone that there are people who cannot wear a mask for health reasons or even mental health reasons. Please don't assume you know why someone doesn't wear a mask. That's dangerous to everyone. But please wear a mask and we have a mandate here in the city and I'm proud that we do. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Any other comments by council? All right, seeing no others. Before we go into start our first piece of business tonight, at this point, I would entertain a motion for the purpose of excusing Counselor Seymour from tonight as he is on vacation. Mr. Demott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we excuse Counselor Seymour.
Do I have a second? Ms. Scully.
I second. I second, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion and a second in order to excuse Counselor Seymour from tonight due to his vacation time. All those in favor, please signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is then carried. Moving to our first piece of business, the consent agenda for tonight. Again, Mr. Dem, yeah, Mr. Demott.
Thank you, Mayor. I move the city council adopt consent agenda items 8A through 8C.
Mr. Volz.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Parker, roll call vote.
Thank you. Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Atchison votes yes. Counselor Demott.
Yes.
Demott votes yes. Mayor Protem Sights.
Yeah.
Sights votes yes. Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Scully votes yes. Counselor Smith.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions. Sorry, I wasn't able to get in the chat box.
Okay, which, which item do you have a question on?
On the capital improvement of our roof of the Northwest Treatment Facility.
Item 8A?
Correct.
Okay, go ahead with your question, please.
I just have a quick question of was this already part of our planned capital improvement projects? And when was the last time the roof was repaired?
Max Kersbaum, please.
Julie, Julie Kayler, Utility Engineering Manager, will, I'll have her double check the, the dates. I think they're both listed in the agenda memo. As far as the first part of that question is concerned, yes, it is part of approved CIP program. We do allow for within our approved CIP, a, a variety of small repair projects. This is in that category. Let's see, I think. I think Julie indicates that the roof on, on the Northwest Treatment Plant goes back. goes back to the original opening of Northwest, which was in about 2001.
Okay, so it hasn't been, this is its first repair?
Yes, that would be correct.
Okay, thank you very much. That's helpful.
You have a vote?
Yes.
Smith, will your vote?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Ms. Parker, continue, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have that Counselor Smith votes yes. And finally, Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Vols votes yes.
Okay. Thank you, council. The consent agenda has passed on a motion with a vote of six to nothing. We have no appointments and resignations to discuss tonight, so we'll move on to the next item of business. This is the first reading of Council's Bill Number 24. Mr. Demott?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill Number 24 on first reading appropriating a transfer from Westminster Economic Development Authority and the amount of $16,441,817 to the 2020 General Capital Improvement Fund for construction of the North Huron Interceptor Sewer Project.
Ms. Scully?
I can.
I have a motion and a second for item 10A1, Council's Bill Number 24. Is there any discussion by council? Seeing none, Ms. Parker, this is a roll call vote for item 10A1.
Counselor Demott?
Yes.
Demott votes yes. Mayor Protem Sights?
Yes.
Sights votes yes. Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Scully votes yes. Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Smith votes yes. Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Vols votes yes, and Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Atchison votes yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 10A1, Council's Bill Number 24 is passed. Six to nothing. Mr. Demott, would you continue with that motion, please? Item A2.
Yes, Mayor. Move contingent upon second reading of Counselor Bill's Number 24 and we to approving the transfer of funds to authorize an amendment to the contract of Carlo Engineers, Inc. for Engineering Services during construction for the North Huron Interceptor Sewer Project in the amount of $1,337,409, and authorize a contingency in the amount of $133,741, for a total of $1,471,150, increasing the total authorized expenditure with this firm for previously approved amount of $2,562,186 to $4,033,336.
Ms. Scully?
I second.
I have a motion and a second on item 10A2, Council's Bill Number 24. Is there any comments or questions from any members of council on this item? Seeing none, Ms. Parker, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Protem Sights?
Yes.
Sights votes yes. Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Scully votes yes. Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Smith votes yes. Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Vols votes yes. Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Atchison votes yes, and Counselor Demott?
Yes.
Demott votes yes.
Thank you, council. Item 10A2 of the second part of Council's Bill Number 24 passes on a six oh vote. Mistress, Demott, would you finish up this item on 10A3, please?
I move the contingent upon second reading of Counselors' Bill Number 24 and we to approving the transfer of funds to authorize a construction contract with the low bidder Northern Colorado Constructors, Inc. for the North Huron Interceptor Sewer Project in the amount of $13,518,788, and authorize a contingency in the amount of $1,451,879 for the total authorized expenditure of $14,970,667.
Ms. Scully?
I second.
I have a motion and a second for the third part of 10A3 attached to Council's Bill Number 24. Are there any comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, Ms. Parker, roll call for part 10A3, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Scully votes yes. Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Smith votes yes. Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Vols votes yes. Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Atchison votes yes. Counselor Demott?
Yes.
Demott votes yes, and Mayor Protem Sights?
Yes.
And Sights votes yes.
Okay. Thank you, council. That concludes item 10A1, 2, and 3. Motion passes on a six oh vote. Moving on to the next item of business. This is item 10B, Council's Bill Number 25. Ms. Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to pass Counselors' Bill Number 25 on first reading authorizing the city manager to execute a First Amendment to the For Sale Development Agreement with Downtown Westminster Residents LLC in substantially the same form as attached for the development of condominiums on a portion of Lot 2, Block A-1 in Downtown Westminster.
Ms. Sights?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion by council on item 10B, Council's Bill Number 25? Seeing none, Ms. Parker, this is a roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll start with Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Smith votes yes. Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Vols votes yes. Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Atchison votes yes. Counselor Demott?
Yes.
Demott votes yes. Mayor Protem Sights?
Yes.
Sights votes yes, and Counselor Scully?
Yes.
And Scully votes yes.
Okay, thank you, council. The motion carries on a six oh vote. Moving on to the next item, this is item 10C. Ms. Sights? Hold on, hang on, hang on, hang on. Sorry, that was Ms. Smith.
I'm happy to take it. Oh, I'm sorry.
It was Ms. Smith that had her hand in for it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move, based on the recommendation of the city manager, to determine that the public interest would best be served by authorizing a negotiated purchase from the sole source provider, Muir Research Incorporated, for $265,000 to provide repair and replacement parts for the solids removal system at Semper Water Treatment Facility, and authorize a contingency in the amount of $26,000 for a total authorized expenditure not to exceed $291,000.
Mr. Demott?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second for item 10C. Are there any comments or questions on this item? Seeing no comments or questions on item 10C, Ms. Parker, would you do the roll call vote, please?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. We'll begin with Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Vols votes yes. Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Atchison votes yes. Counselor Demott?
Yes.
Demott votes yes. Mayor Protem Sights?
Yes.
Sights votes yes. Counselor Scully? Scully votes yes. Counselor Smith?
Yes.
And Counselor Smith votes yes.
Okay, thank you, council. This item passes on a oh vote. Mr. Vols, I believe you're up for the next item, item 10D.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we ratify the 2019 annual license expenditure with Siduro Incorporated for mobile application to the asset management system in the amount of $84,912.
Ms. Scully?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for item 10D for the expenditure of license money. Are there any questions or comments from the council on item 10D? Seeing none, Ms. Parker, this is your last roll call for the night.
All right, Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Atchison votes yes. Counselor Demott?
Yes.
Demott votes yes. Mayor Protem Sights?
Yes.
Sights votes yes. Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Scully votes yes. Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Smith votes yes, and Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Vols votes yes.
All right, thank you, council. Let moves item 10D forward on a passing of the motion as a six oh vote. Mr. Tripp, I think the next item and the next few items are up to you on items for the COVID update.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. We have four items on COVID. Before we get to that, I wanted to raise an issue that is related to COVID. On July 25th and 26th, a week from this Saturday and Sunday, you for a long time had scheduled a council retreat. The content of that retreat includes a, an outside consultant. In fact, two of them that are located in the state of Texas. They would be flying in here for that. The subject matter includes a time for some team building, including visiting your protocols and talking about the governance structure of council manager, government, and an orientation moving forward in terms of how councils work together and work with staff. There would be a brief conversation about the vision statement, and if you wanted to have a conversation in depth about that and potentially alter that vision statement on the basis of your request to have that asked in the most recent survey, we would probably do that from, from that meeting. And then finally, very, very importantly, is our, our budget and the priorities of our budget moving forward. As you know, you've adopted or allowed us to move into a one-year budget because of COVID-19's impact on our economics. We're preparing a significant update for you at the end of July here concerning the revenues of the city, the impacts on spending that this event's had, and what that looks like for the rest of not only this year, but moving ahead in 2021. So that's really the subject matter. What I want to raise with you today is, is I want to put some information out here for you, give you an opportunity to talk about it, because this is your meeting, and ultimately, we, of course, as staff, want to serve you to provide whatever you'd like to see happen at this meeting. But I want to point out that I've had a freeze on travel outside of the state of Colorado to our staff since back in March because we were concerned about the potential spread of the disease from state to state. We do have two people that are scheduled to come in here from the state of Texas, which has a very high incidence of COVID-19, and we'd be asking them also to fly on what now are airlines that are, that are much busier. So that's a concern and a consideration, I believe, that that would be. Although I'm, there are probably some travel happening in the city. We, we would look at that as only being those things that are absolutely essential. And I'm not really aware that anybody has traveled out of the state on our staff. So my question for you is, would you want to consider doing this meeting in a virtual manner and not do it by coming together? Of course, the considerations in that would not only be your health and the health of the staff that would be attending, but also if you had people coming from outside, that impact that might have on the community if we were to contract, somebody was to contract the virus with a visitor. So not to be an alarmist, but to raise it, because it has been raised with me, with staff, as being a matter of a bit inconsistency. I'm going to stop at that and just allow you to comment and ask questions that you might. We would adjust this in whatever way were helpful to you. I would tell you that I feel very confident in the budget portions of the presentation, doing that with our own staff here locally and not needing the outside consulting in this meeting. I do think the outside consulting to help facilitate your governance conversations is important. This is why we hire these folks and utilize them to help us all through that process. I do wonder if it, if we did decide, if we did decide to do this virtually, if that would be as effective. So, you know, we would hope at some point to be in a different situation in this country where travel would not be, have to be second-guessed and questioned. We're not there yet. Following our discussion of this item, you know, we're going to hear from our staff on the cases in our own state and the fact that they are growing. So I'll stop at that and, and ask you if you would like dialogue on that issue.
Mr. Tripp, I'm going to ask the council to give some thought to that and give them some time since they're just hearing this, and let's go through the other reports, and then we'll come back to that.
That's a good idea. Thank you, Mayor. I will start with Max Kirschbaum to give us an update on our case, cases here regionally within our two counties and also within the state. And then he'll be followed by any, any updates on reopening. I think Max may be doing that. And then a financial update and a long-term recovery update from Deputy Door and Department Head Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tripp. Matt, if you'll bring up the slides there. This evening, I'm going to show you this, the similar three slides that I showed you last week. The first being with, from CDPHE. This data is through July 11th. Again, it shows a three-day average of the COVID-19 positive cases. And that trend that we discussed last week, where we hit a, an approximate low on about the 15th of June is continuing in an upward pattern. You can see there are, there are rises and falls in that data that sometimes are more a reflection of when reporting is made versus the rate of actual case numbers. But you can see there's a pretty clear upward trend on the number of cases. You go to the next slide, please. This is the Jefferson County data through July 10th, so over the weekend. And once again, they plot both a three-day and a seven-day average. That's the line portion of those graphs. And again, the, the same general trend holds true for Jefferson County as it does for the state, an approximate low in mid-June, and a, an increasing trend since that time. You see there is a distinct dip there on the three-day moving average line, which is really, again, just a reflection of reporting data with the Fourth of July holiday. And then lastly, the last slide shows the Adams County portion of tri-county data also for a three-day rolling average. Here, interestingly, again, I, I have to believe that there is a, a reporting issue over the last couple of days. This data is through July 12th, and I isolated only the Adams County portion. Interestingly, if you look at the lines that are plotted for Arapahoe County and Douglas County, all three of them have this very large decline over the last couple of days. Again, I think over the, we'll probably see in the next couple of days, some of that correcting itself as reporting catches up over a weekend period of data. So on a similar trend line as we have been now for a fourth week, there, there was some questioning and discussion from council last week about other forms of measurement. The, this is only one that we are looking at. The death rate in the state continues to remain low. That's still a true statement again through this week's data. And on a statewide basis, hospitalizations has increased, but is still a fairly low number, even though it's seen more than a doubling since it hit a, it also hit a low a few, a few weeks ago. But still, that number is still fairly, fairly low in comparison to capacities that the governor has talked about. statewide for ICU capacity. There is, there are other forms of measurement that we are taking a look at. We're also looking based at, on a new Public Health Order 20-32, which is directed toward, from the state to the counties. We're looking at one of the measures that is being directed at counties if we were to apply to a a city situation. We would also, we would also see that in counting the number of cases over a 14-day period per population of 100,000. If we were to apply that data, which is, doesn't become effective to the counties until the 24th of July. But if we were to apply that today, we, we would see that, that the threshold that they're looking at with counties is to be at or below 25 cases per 100,000 population over a 14-day period. If we were to run that data right now from June 28th through yesterday, July 12th, we would see that rate to be at about 77 cases per 100,000 population. So again, it's another measure. We're looking at all such measures as we might change some of those in our future reporting to you. And I would also, I would close by adding that we're using this information as well as all of the, the plans that have been, that are being written, revised, updated, made stronger or more stringent as we consider the, the case for reopening additional facilities. With that, I have no further information unless you have any questions.
Max, just stand by. I know Counselor Demott raised his hand, so presumably he has a question on your report.
Do you want me to go ahead, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
And it, and you may not have an answer to this because it, you know, you did go through the, this is the data you have. So specifically what I'm interested in as we move down this path is, is a lot of what I've been hearing nationally and how I'm curious how it plays out locally. And so I recently saw something from the CDC that was showing that, you know, the death rate is a lot lower percentage-wise to infection rate than we thought. Obviously, we still want to protect the people that are vulnerable to, to this horrific virus. But I think that that is a really important piece of information. Coupled with the other thing I'm curious about, I've been hearing a lot that it's narrowing the demographics of who is at most risk. I know even this morning, when I was listening to the mayor's update with the chamber, he had spoke about a, a case that I heard too of a younger person who went to one of these supposed COVID parties and ended up losing his battle to that disease. But it seems to me in most of the trends that we're seeing, this is still not as, I guess, severe as we thought in the beginning from just the pure numbers. And I don't know if that's true or not, but some of the things that I've read, some of, again, from the CDC, make it look as though that, you know, we're looking at a, a death rate under 1% of, of infections. And I think that, you know, nobody wants to have to judge life or death, but it is important for us to make decisions moving forward that we understand the numbers to that level, in my opinion.
Max, you have any comment?
Counselor Demott, thank you for the input. We, we, we certainly do pay attention to that death rate, and as I said, it has been low. I'll just, I'll just kind of go back to the conditions that we, that we presented to you on April 20th. Were, were really geared toward positive cases or even as we've looked at that further, rate of positive cases or rate per 100,000. But we, we did not identify as a, a, a condition, the death rate. Perhaps that's something that we could continue to discuss and look at whether that ought to be factored into these, the, the, the decisions that are being made and, and, and the conditions that you, you may even want to revisit as a body, but at this time, we were, we have not classified a death rate as a, a key factor in, in the decision.
And I, I appreciate that. And it's, I mean, it's a hard conversation to have. However, I do think that, you know, any kind of sickness, there's a, that that can take somebody's life. There's a mortality rate. And I, and unfortunately, we, you know, we are having to look at things as far as like, what is the impact on our economy, which could take loss of life in other ways. So I think it's important for us to fully understand that data. And the other thing, you know, that I, that I rarely hear about is when we first started talking about COVID. You know, the whole thing that both the president and the governors and all of us were asking people is we want to, you know, flatten the curve. We got through that and we got to some ways that we can try to more safely open. But I think that there was never the expectation that we could completely protect everybody from this. And my understanding was more so even, you know, once we opened back up, we would, we understood that we would have infections. And that was part of the reason that we wanted to increase the bed rate in the hospital. So you know, these are the kind of lenses that I'm looking at the situation through because we need to judge that impact holistically. You know, and so I think that it's, it's valuable information because I think we're going to be dealing with this for a while. It sounds like, you know, there's no vaccine in sight for those people who are, you know, looking for that as a path to, to get past this. So trying to understand at what level we need to live with this and be able to try to mitigate as much as we can. But also reopen our economy and allow people to earn a living and be able to live life.
Agreed. Point very well taken. We haven't, we haven't heard much about flatten the curve in, in the more recent weeks. And as you pointed out, that didn't mean that there would be fewer cases. It's just, it just meant that they would be spread out over a longer period of time. Which is kind of why we just, we angled toward that idea of cases being on the decline versus cases being on the incline. And so that we, we kind of gravitated more toward watching the rate of change with the, the positive cases. But I think that's a point well made. Thank you.
Thank you, Max.
Max, and something in the follow-up of your presentation. You know, last week, Tri County issued a new health directive that takes place on July the 24th. And part of the reasoning behind that of the counties that Tri County covers being Adams, Arapahoe, and Douglas. Douglas still remains the lowest of the three. Typically, Arapahoe had the highest infection rate, but now that has changed and Adams County in that three-county area has seen a number of upticks in regards to that as well as the state. We're waiting on the new numbers to come out of Jefferson County. And there's a meeting where the health director is going to brief the county commissioners tomorrow on his. But in either case, the mandate of facial coverings that's coming out of Tri County will take effect on the 24th. It's requiring businesses to deny entry into businesses that people don't wear a mask unless they meet one of the exceptions, which Mr. Demott referred to earlier. Is that if they have medical or psychological reasons that they can't wear one, then and as we talked about on the chamber call this morning, it's not our place to question someone who says that they have a medical reason they can't. But we also don't want people using that as a phony excuse, just not to have to wear a mask. But what we are seeing is still an increase in numbers that if we can't get a handle on it, and if we can't get people to comply so we can get this, the one word we keep referring to is flatten the curve. It's unlikely we could move to the next level of protect our neighbors, allowing more business to open, more people to return to their jobs so that we can hopefully not face near the number of potential evictions and mortgage failures. So we've got some mix of this still, that's still going on. Decisions are still being made, at least by one of our health departments, which we're hoping they're going to make that decision within the next couple of days so that we don't end up with a split issue that we have today in an order that's already been posted, just has a delayed effective date. And I'm not seeing anything from the, either the state or either our two reporting counties that indicates that our number is going back down since we saw that movement by Tri County on Wednesday. Because it's not really a question, but it's just more of a statement. Ms. Sights, you had a comment?
I do. So first off, I want to thank Director Kirschbaum for his report. And then I, I also, you know, I, I agree the goal is to make sure that we don't have surging at our hospitals and our ICU beds and that we have the ability to treat and recognize. I think all of us agree the virus is here for a while. And so we have to do every, I, I think we can have the goal of having businesses reopen, allow people to earn their livelihood and wanting to do everything in our capability to make sure we prevent the transmission of the disease. And so similar to what the, the mayor said, I do think the best tool we have really are these compliance with, with wearing masks. And I would encourage anyone who's listening, please do your part and, and mask up to help our community. I did want to say, I, I was surprised by the numbers Counselor Demott mentioned about the mortality rate and, and citing the CDC as the source. So I did just send all of council, I did go to the CDC. And, and the number is quite different than what Counselor Demott just communicated to us. And I'd be more than happy to have him, I, I would like to be wrong on this. But what I just saw from the CDC is that the mortality rate is at 5.5%. So still significantly more deadly than, than most viruses. As, as far as what happens if we aren't vigilant, I think unfortunately, we're seeing models of that across the country where we are starting to see some real impact on services. And then as far as healthcare services and then, you know, in addition the, the impacts to the business community. I know California today, I believe, closed restaurants and movie theaters and, you know, kind of took a few steps backwards. And I don't want to see that happen in this state. I don't want to see the economic pain. So I, I would ask us all to treat this with the level of respect and attention it deserves. Because I think we're all in this together and, and how we survive is going to be based off of all of our levels of behavior and vigilance. So thank you, Kirschbaum, and thank you to my colleagues for their comments.
Max, do you have anything else?
No, Mr. Mayor, I do not.
Okay, let's move on to item two then. Mr. Tripp, who's got item two?
Mr. Mayor, this is Max Kirschbaum again. I, I addressed item number two just by saying that we're considering to review this information as we look at actively reviewing plans for additional reopening of city facilities.
All right, do you want to move to item three then?
That'll be Larry Door and then John Hall.
All right, Mr. Door, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Larry Door speaking, Chief Financial Officer and Deputy City Manager. My update will be brief tonight because we've just concluded analyzing and organizing all of our financial statements for the previous month and digging into the numbers. I could just tell you that in a real first blush, that there are no surprises, nothing unusual to report. And we're focused on providing significant detail at your coming council retreat on the budget, both our revenue forecasts going forward and our collections to date. I, I do want to report on the city's FEMA public assistance spending thus far, and we're applying for those reimbursements. The amount to date is $425,247. I want to report that each week as, as has been done for city council. And then I also wanted to just give a very brief update on our utility billing assistance program that has now been underway for a short while. We've provided financial assistance to 104 Westminster residential household accounts. And so want to provide those brief details for you. And then just let you know that at your coming meeting, I'll have an update on our government response principle under the CARES Act. Last week, I provided an update on social recovery and also Jenny Grafton from our Economic Development Department had an update on people and programs serving people. And of course, our Director of Economic Development, John Hall, has been giving reports on economic recovery, and he'll do that here just following my comments. But in the next week, we'll have an update for you on the government response principle and some of the programs and opportunities therein. So again, just concluding the analysis of our most recent financial statements, we'll have significant updates and our third COVID Chronicle Bulletin prepared for council's budget retreat and revisions to forecast and so forth. So with that, I'll just turn it, unless there are any questions, I will just turn it over to the John Hall, Director of the Department of Economic Development. Thank you.
Mr. Door, there is one question from Ms. Smith for you. Nancy, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. One of my questions was, and I believe this was asked in several emails going around. So I presume that you might have the answer, but, and I don't know if this is your area or not, but I'd like an update on how many masks we've given to the public and what, how much of that $100,000 has been spent on masks? And what type of education we've done to the public, since those were two policy items brought forward by council.
Thank you, Counselor Smith. I appreciate the question on masks. We have that at hand. I don't have it right off the top of my head at the moment, but before we conclude our COVID-19 update here, I think perhaps at the end of Director Hall's comments, we could have some of those statistics from somebody who is on the call here. We'll, we'll get that organized and have a response during tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Great, thank you. My last question was on the top of my head, and now I can't remember. I'll note it once, once I remember. Thank you.
Okay, very good, Mr. Mayor. If, if I could, unless there are any additional questions, we could proceed to John Hall's update. And I will attempt to track down the, I think the question was generally around the number and dollars related specifically to masks. So we will track that down, sir.
All right, well, you should have another question, Mr. Door. Mr. Demott, go ahead.
It's actually a follow-up on, in addition to what Counselor Smith is asking for. I had sent an email when this was raised about, because we had got some communications about why we hadn't done a mask mandate. So I was glad to hear Counselor Vols reiterate that we actually did that early on, even though I still would have preferred us just recommending it versus the resolution we did. We did do that as a council majority did that. So one of the things, though, that we did when we passed the piece to spend the money, COVID money in order to buy masks, was the education piece that Counselor Smith just mentioned. Earlier this week, I asked specifically if I could see what we did around the subject that the mayor brought up as far as making sure people understand that some people can't wear masks and some of the reasons why, so that people understand that. We've continued to hear a lot of belittling of people who don't wear masks. Obviously, I encourage you, if you're somebody who can wear masks, do so. But I'd like to see those educational pieces too that we've done so far and make sure that we're continuing to do those. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Smith, you remembered your item.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The survey that's going out to residents right now, I believe it's just on social media. I'd like to know when we'd receive the results of those and what we plan to do Um, I'd like to know um, when we'd receive the results of those and um, what we plan to do in response to the answers that we've received. Doesn't have to be answered tonight, um, but just noted.
Thank you, councillor Smith. If I might just ask a follow-up question, make sure I understand, I think you're, I want to make sure, are you speaking about the survey questions related to a budgetary uh, input and choices uh, on city budget and finances?
No, I believe there's a a residential survey um, going out or have been posted um, for COVID response that the city's going through. Um, so I'd like to understand more about how we're using those results and um, what the results are.
Very good. Yes, noted. We'll uh, we will follow up on on that particular survey and and details and information uh, in the near future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Hall, would you like to start?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, and I'm going to take a slightly different approach uh, in the type of information I provide to you this evening. Although I will be brief, I'm going to focus on some of the eviction and housing related orders that have been in place and where those stand. As most of you uh, are aware, uh, during the COVID crisis, one of the first actions that the governor took was to impose a moratorium on evictions that lasted through June 13th. He then took another step, which was to extend the period of notification before initiating eviction from 10 days to 30 days. So if you've been doing math as as I've been talking, that 30 days was set to expire today, July 13th. Yesterday, uh, the governor extended that notification period for another 30 days, meaning that in, for all, for all intents and purposes, uh, there continued to be a moratorium on the initiation of eviction actions related to non-payment. So I would uh, ask you to mark uh, August 13th on your calendar as the next time when eviction uh, evictions may be initiated by landlords for non-payment. The next date I would reference relates to the federal moratorium on evictions for uh, publicly subsidized housing units. That moratorium period ends July 25th, and there's no indication that that will be extended. Uh, the third uh, moratorium is on foreclosures for federally backed mortgages. And that was extended to August 31st. Uh, so those uh, homeowners will have some additional time should they have been unable to make mortgage payments. In response to housing challenges, of course, we've been before you uh, multiple times now um, related to two programs, the uh, Temporary Rent Assistance Program, which launched on July 1st, and the Westy Rise Above Housing Assistance Grant CARES-funded Program, which is set to launch on August 5th. Both of those will uh, provide housing assistance to Westminster residents. Finally, I I just want to remind everyone that the COVID-related unemployment benefits, that is, was generally known as the extra $600 per week are set to end at the end of this month, so on July 31st. So those are all things that we're keeping an eye on that will have um, significant impacts on the citizens, our residents and um, employees within uh, the city. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and thank you.
Any comments from council? Ms. Sykes?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Hall. Um, I really appreciate the update and honestly, your your entire department's work um, on this issue. I did send an email today, um, and it perhaps, um, I don't know if you've seen it yet, but it just was asking um, how are we planning on promoting these programs in the community? Um, there was a CPR article and I recognize the circumstances of that situation. I don't believe our programs would have been able to assist with. I believe her troubles started prior to COVID-19, but were um, made more difficult and she was more challenged by um, the the impacts of COVID-19. But I I'm realizing I I believe that story is one of probably many of of stress and frustration in the community and and not being sure where to tie, where to turn. And I'm wondering, how are we promoting that we have assistance, um, you know, particularly from the one that's coming up in August? Um, and then also promoting our legal aid clinic. Um, so I don't know if you're the right person to ask us, but it feels relevant based off of your um, presentation tonight.
Mayor Protem Sykes, I did see your email and thank you for that question. Um, I, uh, with your indulgence, I'd like to take a little bit of time to construct a a full answer. We tend to work through partners on our housing and legal services programs. I'd like to reach out to them um, so that you have a full picture of all of the efforts that are being made to get information out and to help uh, educate uh, citizens about the services that are available. So I will be following up with you on that.
Thank you. I look forward to that.
Any other comments or questions on Mr. Hall? Mr. Tripp, do you have an update for us on the mask issue?
Yes, Ryan Hagren is standing by here to provide an uh, response to councillor Smith's question. And maybe uh, Ryan, if you would, I know you're going to be probably handling the communication question that councillor Smith had that uh, councillor Demont provided uh, I believe today or yesterday. Um, if you have anything, an update on that or any timeline and when you'll have that, uh, let us know, but provide us the data that councillor Smith asked for, please. Ryan, you may be muted. We're not hearing you.
Ms. Parker, can you offer him any assistance?
Yes, I'm about to reach out, Mr. Mayor. I do show that he is unmuting. Uh, Ryan, if you are wearing a headset, you might double check that you didn't accidentally mute your headset.
Mayor, I might suggest we'll provide you a response. Uh, I'll have Ryan uh, text the information to someone and uh, we'll get back to you uh, before we leave this evening or send something to you first thing in the morning. Thank you.
Understandable. We've all experienced some level of technical difficulties at one time or another. Uh, Mr. Tripp, do you have anything on the long-term recovery update?
Oh, that was, that was uh, Director Hall's report. And so that that finishes our comments.
All right. Uh, go back to the original question uh, that the city manager raised in regards to the upcoming meeting. I have a concern that I'll express is this is my concern, and I think there's some uh, level of concern from the city staff about bringing in people from an outside agency that uh, is coming from a highly infected area right now to potentially bring that in and expose the council and others through a two-day in-person meeting. I think the most important piece that we have before us on the 25th, 26th is the budget item. And I'm fairly confident that we can accomplish that with the people here, even if we need to be remote. Uh, because of the situation I have at my home, I can just not afford to have somebody come in here from outside and pass that on and for me to take it home. So I'm pretty comfortable saying, look, let the consultant stay in Texas. We'll defer that to a little bit later, but we we don't have the ability to to defer the budget piece. But I'll wait to get uh, comments from the others and I'll start with uh, Ms. Sykes.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so, you know, I um, do have some hesitation, I guess, strong hesitation. Um, wanting to have all of the city elected leadership in one room um, with consultants that are coming from, not just that they're coming from a um, an area with high level uh, of um, positive cases, that's just also the the air travel, there not being enough time for them to be rapidly tested, um, all of that. Um, so you know, I would be supportive of doing um, this virtually. Um, you know, I see some benefits, even if we don't have a fully facilitated um, you know, protocols discussion and at least having a virtual conversation on protocols so we can be on the same page. Um, not foreclosing on having um, you know, a facilitated meeting in the future, but I think it would be helpful um, to have the conversation and and see if we can sign off on some um, agreed rules um, on how we conduct ourselves. So I don't um, I don't know if people are open to that, but at the very minimum, I would be fine doing a virtual budget retreat. Um, but I am interested to hear from you and and I want to be really respectful in this conversation because I do recognize we have new members of council and I do want to hear your input as to how you'd like to go forward. Um, but at the minimum, I would not want our employees to attend. I think that that um, an unnecessary and undue risk to put them in, particularly as it doesn't conform with our current um, policy regarding out-of-state travel. Thanks.
Ms. Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, I I I'm sad that um, it it's happening during this time and that it it, that we maybe would be better off not meeting in person. Um, I have, I have great, great concerns about having people come in from a state that has a high rate of infection. Um, they're traveling on a plane. They aren't going to know if they're um, exposed or asymptomatic. Um, asymptomatic. Um, and I too have, um, personally, I suffer from asthma. Um, and I also take care of my mother and I've worked really hard to keep my family and myself isolated um, to make sure that we aren't exposed and that we aren't giving it to the people around us. So I I would be more comfortable maybe virtually. Um, I think it is something we can do. I know it's not the ideal situation, but um, I would be much more comfortable in that situation.
Any other comments from other members of the council? Because we sort of need feedback from everybody on this. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, while I understand that everyone on the council, uh, aside for from uh, councillor Seymour and myself has gone through this process, um, I am very interested in having this be a in-person meeting. Um, I I understand the uh, the concerns that um, everyone is going through um, with their households and their personal uh, thoughts on the matter, but I think that this is so important for all of us to discuss and be together um, with with the uh, thoughts of travel. Um, I think that we can uh, one of the policies that I have in my work is um, to be tested, COVID-tested, to ensure that if any vendors come to our facility that we are ensuring that they do not have um, COVID. And so I think that while social distancing and wearing masks um, and adhering to all public orders, I think that we can get this done. And I would I would encourage my colleagues to um, understand the position that um, councillor Seymour and I are in um, with uh, trying to hold um, this this facilitation. Um, I think it's important enough for all of us to meet. I mean, we have our first responders who are out there every day um, in this situation. Um, they they have to be. And so I think that um, us leading and showing that we can do proper protocols as far as making policy um, regarding budget, regarding our protocols, I think it's important enough for us to meet. Um, again, I understand where um, y'all are coming from and I do have great concern for you all, but um, please, please make an effort to see on my end um, what what this would look like for um, me as a freshman councillor uh, coming into this. Um, so I just would encourage everyone to look at that um, and and have our uh, facilitators tested. I believe it's even free testing. Um, I'm even willing to get tested if that's what it takes. Um, so I I would encourage all of us to to meet. Um, like I said, it's important um, that we, it's important for me that we see face-to-face. Um, I think there can be a virtual component as far as um, having it be on public record as far as uh, maybe a um, a video session or a audio session. Um, but I do believe that we need this. Um, am I asking for um, a postponement? Absolutely not, because um, I think it's been far too long uh, for all of us uh, to have been meeting and um, making policy decisions when we don't even have protocols in place um, for this council. So um, I would, I would hope that we can, and this is unfortunate that we're having this discussion without uh, councillor Seymour, but um, I I would just hope that we can come to a consensus on on this. Thank you.
Mr. Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm along the same lines as councillor Smith. I understand everybody's concern. Um, but frankly, as the state starts opening up, I mean, we're, again, there's, there's risk and for those folks who have higher risk and have to take um, different precautions. So I'm not sure if there's some way that we can accommodate somewhere in the middle. I like councillor Smith's idea of being tested. Um, I myself have traveled out of the state recently on vacation and I know other people have as well. Um, and I mean, we never know when we're running into somebody, whether it's at the gyms that are luckily now open again. Um, you know, at Costco, that's usually pretty full. Um, so we are having to take precautions. And I mean, at some point, we need to get get back to some sense of being able to do things in person. Um, I know even in my my business, we've at some limited capacity allowed people to start going back to the office with a lot of different precautions from checking temperatures to, you know, where have they traveled? Um, and I understand these folks are supposed to come from Texas, but I agree uh, in face is important. I think the outside help when we're going over the budget is important. Um, I think one of the most important things really is that this council is operating under protocols that two members weren't here um, to be part of uh, when we adopted those last. So that's one of the very first things that we did when I was elected was we went over our our protocols so that we talked about um, how we were going to operate as the council together. So um, I hope that we can figure out some way whether that's us all getting tested as well as the facilitators. Um, but I think that there is uh, a huge value in us being able to be face-to-face and have these meetings in person with the facilitators that we're hiring in order to do this.
Mr. Vols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I um, I feel, I do feel bad for councillor Smith and Seymour, uh, having not gone through that. I think we do need to remedy that as quickly as possible. But at the same time, I respect uh, members of this council who for health reasons just do not feel at this moment that we can meet face-to-face. So I would probably have to lean towards that um, how, and I do feel bad about it, but I think I have to lean towards the safety of those members who feel they either through their family circumstances or health and and whatnot, can't get together. So I'd probably would support that. If there's a way to find um, to have enough people tested to meet face-to-face, I would uh, support that as well. But as it stands now, I think I would um, I don't want to take a risk with uh, some of my colleagues and their families. Thank you.
Mr. Tripp, this doesn't involve just the city council. This involves a lot of staff. And I think they have the the right to have a voice in this because we're, you're potentially asking them to come to this same session for two days. Where is staff at? How comfortable are they?
Well, I I would tell you that uh, it's not my intention to include all the department heads because in total, that's a group of 30 people and that's unmanageable. I I'd say face-to-face. Uh, it'll be, there would be a lot of difficulty in communicating. Um, but that's, we've done, we've done this meeting uh, with uh, um, you know, those folks uh, report to myself and the deputies, so that's, I'm not as concerned about that. The core people that would be part of what we have in front of you on the agenda, about seven people. Um, those seven wouldn't be there all the time. For instance, Chris Lindsay would be involved. um, those seven wouldn't be there all the time. For instance, Chris Lindsay would be involved in the budget presentation, but wouldn't have to be there during the protocols. I polled the seven, and uh five of the seven asked me to encourage uh if we meet in person, that everybody be tested. Um, so that would give you an idea of their concern, and I I know because people have shared with me um that they do have their own health concerns and issues where they're uh really isolating themselves during this time, so, uh, and taking a lot of precautions. So if that helps, Mayor, I would tell you that um five of the seven of us uh have that concern and would, if we are going to get together in person, would request that we test. Uh, but beyond that, as I started with, I want to tell you, this is your meeting um these two days. We're there to serve it, and uh I'm just looking for some direction, um, if not tonight, this week sometime, um, to allow Cody and Michelle and others that are going to be um meeting to put together the final organization to figure out um how how to do that, what format's going to be. Um, we're prepared to meet. Uh, we have a plan for that. Uh, we'd be unveiling that in the next couple of days, if that's what you decided. Thank you.
All right. I don't want, I'm not going to try to get to the point where I'm going to tell people they absolutely have to show up, because I've got to make some serious decision, because I, uh, as my wife is a caretaker for her brother, any infection he caused could could be his life, and I'm not going to do that, just playing out. And will or not, we end up with a mix of a virtual or in-person meeting. I need a little bit more time to think about the question, so I'm going to ask each council member, you've you've had an opinion. I want to have uh Mr. Seymour have the opportunity to hear the discussion, that he can listen to the tape and have an opinion to voice in as well. But I'm not asking any staff member or any council member to come to something that they feel is a threat to their family in person. We didn't create this. We didn't want it. We'd like it to go away, but it is what we've got. And if we have to make a decision on what has to be done, protocols is one thing, it's important, but it's not something that we have to get done. We do have to get the budget done. That's not an option. So think about this over the night and tomorrow. By no later than close of business Wednesday, I want each member of the council to respond to Cody on your position and what you're asking for. And then if we have to get a special meeting before next Monday, uh, we will. But I want you to think hard and long about what you've heard tonight and some of the issues that uh not only the council, but the staff members as well could be facing. Mr. Tripp, do you have anything else on the updates?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Uh, yes, I got a text message um from uh, from Ryan, and let me pull that up. Uh, we've served over a hundred and sixty businesses uh and delivered thirty thousand masks, seventy thousand, seventy-five thousand, four hundred dollars. Of the hundred thousand dollars that was authorized has been, has been spent. This afternoon, I think at about three o'clock, Ryan provided an initial uh answer to Counselor Demont's question about uh education program, and Ryan reports to me um that you'll have a full campaign report later this month um with uh all of the seventy or so different mechanisms, and I should say seventy or so different um uh methods that were used to uh provide education and support to the mask campaign. So uh more to come, Counselor Demont, but there was a short answer to that just this afternoon, and those uh Counselors Seymour uh are the numbers you asked for, I believe.
Okay, thanks, Don. Mr. Demont, you have a closing question?
I have a statement and a question. One thing, Mr. Mayor, you're right, we do need to do the budget, but in order to properly do the budget, we need to have strategic planning, because our budget is driven by our strategic plan. And so if this group does not have input, especially with two new members, to have a strategic plan to look at a budget, I am very uncomfortable with that. Uh, my question is is for Mr. Tripp, and I don't know what you can get together. There's been talk about getting tested. I know through different levels of government and different organizations where um it's important that they meet in person. Um, however, safety being a concern, that there are different ways that they can do testing. So I would be curious to know if we could get some sort of idea on what kind of testing that we would be able to provide that may um increase the the safety of people. Um, the additional thing that I'm curious about is if you could get the majority of of the group together in order to meet, is there a way that you can do a virtual component for folks that aren't comfortable to meet if a portion of the group could meet in person?
Yeah, I I received a text message, um, and I had a conference, it's a follow-up to conversation I had uh with Cody and other staff this afternoon uh to get an update as to what testing opportunities were available, because we've been thinking about this for a couple of days. Um, it's not uh particularly optimistic in terms of the reliability of the short-term tests, those tests that are less than a day. I can tell you from personal experience and also from other people that I've talked to, uh, the 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 normal test that's out there is anywhere between three and five days' response, but I can uh absolutely assure you that we're pulling out all stops to see whether or not we can't find something that would be both reliable uh and a short enough term that would help with a meeting of this nature. So I'll, I'll get you more information as it's available. Thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the business of the city council that we have on the agenda. However, we do still have one executive session on the uh two se- two seventeen bill. But in order to give everybody a a short pause, uh, and again, we will be leaving this uh agenda. You will have to go back to your schedule and pick up on the location and the passwords for the next executive session. It's approximately eight fifty-three. Uh, I'm just going to say we'll reconvene in about seven minutes. Uh, that will be at nine PM uh in the next chat area. Ms. Parker, you have a comment, and then we'll adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, actually, you covered exactly what I was going to say. I just wanted to remind those who are participating in the executive session that they have a separate meeting link with a password, and I have just resented it to those individuals who may need it, so it'll be at the top of their email.
Right.
And uh, Mr. Mayor, this is Dave Frankel, City Attorney. Quick question. Is it our intention to reconvene in the exec session or in the open meeting, sir?
Uh, we would be in the executive session. Uh, so for now, we would need a motion to go into that executive session.
That's what I was hinting at. So yes, if we could have a a vote in the open meeting.
Would you lead us on?
An exact session.
We've had a request to go into an executive session with staff in regards to uh legal interpretation of the Senate Bill two seventeen. And I will uh ask Mr. Frankel to lead us into that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, City Council, they may, the executive session that's proposed this evening uh for council is to consult with the city attorney regarding legal issues associated with Senate Bill twenty-dash-two seventeen pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code one eleven-three, C-three, and eight, as well as Colorado revised statute twenty-four-six-four oh-two-four B.
This time, I will poll each member of the council to confirm that they are prepared to go into an executive session, and I will start with uh Mr. Demont.
Yep.
Okay, Ms. Sykes?
Yes, I hit the wrong button.
All right. Uh, Ms. Scully?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Vols?
Yes.
Okay. We will adjourn at this point, and we will see you in the next motion uh as at nine PM.